The Spring Award of Education meeting for August 9, 2018. Roll call?
Anderson?
Here.
Baff, Desloni?
Here.
Beth, Stuki?
Here. Hi, spring.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
You have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baff, Desloni?
Yes.
Yes. Approval of the July 17, 2018 meeting minutes, your motion to accept that.
Salute.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baff, Desloni?
Yes.
Yes. Approval of the August 2, 2018 special meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Seven.
In a second.
Second.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Baff, Desloni?
Yes.
Stuki?
Yes.
As the president moved into public participation, our Warren County Career Center success story doesn't look like it's been meeting to happen tonight. Our apologies. Two point two, we have a resource coordinator update. We were aware of the fact that money for the new sellers would not arrive until sometime after six fifteen, so we're going to move on when they get here and the national regular slide event for the report on the resource coordinator update. So we're in two point three.
You want for the education association about the classified employees and having prearranged. Is there any public participation on any agenda item? Sure. All right, we're at a work session.
Move to three point two, which is discussion personnel needs. You want to refer to resources. Carrie has them.
I want to thank the students out for, um, the office on my plate, so bear with me. This is my first discussion. I needed to bring this for discussion. So it's to broaden her attention that the clerical aides at Dennis Five Points along with the clinic aides and all sorts of the buildings need to modify their work schedule so that it is more in conjunction with when kids are in the building and it's not so chaotic in the office and parents are waiting and budging all the folks. And we are proposing to extend their day by fifteen minutes for the clerical aides and then it's going to be five minutes at the end of the day. And then for the clinic aides, thirteen minutes so that they're always in the building when a student, students are on campus and at the end of the day, they're charging a phone call and all the necessary things that they have to do. I would say these eight people that it affects are coming in early, staying later on in time. Sometimes they can fill out timesheets for off time, so they're staying, not always able to pay for it. I work for Tara and it's going to cost for the two clerical aides around $2,000 in a forty through the year and then about $2,300 for the six clinic aides for the year.
And then this also goes along with the meeting that we had with the, uh, the police chief and the fire chief, so they recommend we have some more people in the buildings at the starting and ending of the day. And this allows for that to happen also that we'll have, you know, a few, a couple extra folks in, uh, you know, in each building that can provide an extra assistance at the beginning and end of the day.
It seems to me like that would be a natural time to want to have like extra people that there would be more potential for injuries and stuff with kids coming and going. Why initially didn't we have like, like a thinking like nurse aides?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's always been, they've always had only seven and a half hours a day, which is, is not enough. I mean, most, most of the clinic aides or nurses are, are full eight hours because that's how long kids are in the building.
Makes sense to have them in the building. That's what the door is making care of. So we wanted for this discussion and then we will be asking for a [inaudible]. Let me know if you have any questions. I did some digging so as to understand what's going on and go to principles for [inaudible].
Alrighty, so I, I, I have the next several items, so I'm going to try to move along quickly and try not to bore you too badly. Uh, the next is our discussion of the band boosters concession agreement. Last board meeting, we, uh, we approved the concession agreement for the food family fund day that takes care of the Wade Field concession stand. The band boosters take care of the concession stand here in this building for basketball and volleyball and all those other events. Uh, it's just a continuation of the, of the last one. It took out a, you know, a couple of words, a couple of sentences here and there that, that were not pertinent now, but it's really just an extension of that last contract that we have for the last five years.
I was impressed with how thorough the contract was and how many eyes around the money.
Correct.
That nobody is going to do anything with the money without any people checking it and it going directly to the bank. So I appreciated that in the contract.
Yes, it's a good contract and the, and the boosters are happy to have it. You know, they struggle a couple of times to get volunteers, but they definitely want to continue doing it. It's a big plus for them. Any other questions? Alrighty, three point four. Um, as we progress through and we're adding the additional six classrooms in Clear Creek, we are going to need some additional custodial help. Um, we added, when we added the other classrooms, we added a halftime person at Clear Creek because, you know, we made that building from a pre-K, K building to a pre-K, one building. Uh, and then with the additional space that we're adding now, it, it pushes that heat, that, that custodial work hour piece over the limit of using just a halftime person. So what I will, uh, plan to bring to the next board meeting is a recommendation to add a, a full-time custodian at Clear Creek. Right now it's a halftime custodian. And then because we're taking on the additional floor at, at Educare, my outside grounds guys don't have the time to be able to maintain another 10,000 square foot, even though right now it's still not finished, but it's going to become more and more active as we start moving stuff in there and having some other things. So what I'm recommending is we keep the halftime position at, um, SI and then we add another halftime position that would then take care of the Educare building. My outside guys will still maintain the garbage and they'll still do, they'll still do some major cleaning in there, but the day-to-day cleaning would be the responsibility of a custodian. That building does fall under the, the contract out of custodian, so we can't put it out to an outside group. It has to be an inside person. So in total, this is in a, in an increase of one custodial position. And when we originally talked about adding the, the rooms in Clear Creek, I, I briefly talked about the fact that we're probably going to need some extra custodial work. And then with the addition of the extra space and, um, that we've, um, taken all of Educare, it's definitely going to need, uh, one full-time custodian that will help to maintain the current levels of cleaning that we need to add.
If I volunteer over there to coach, anybody want to volunteer?
Yes. You couldn't vote on it, but I'll talk to you there. Any other questions about the, the custodial piece that we're looking for? So it'd be one additional custodian that we need a little bit higher basically. Alrighty, next is the update on the summer projects and I'm going to kind of cram this in because the next one is the committee report, so I'm just going to cram in, um, my update on my summer as well as our safety committee because a lot of that goes hand in hand. So it's going to kind of meld both of those two things together. This summer's been busy. Um, we had a, a new phone system installed. Okay, we had a new phone system installed, um, that became effective July 1. Um, so Josh, the tech guy with Ford Edge, he's spent a lot of time getting that to where we need it to be. Um, when we went away from the Cisco system two years ago, we went with a, a system that was, um, not hosted by us. It was hosted off-site, um, which brought along some issues, some directory issues to some, you know, it went down a lot because we didn't have internal functionality when we lost external pieces. Um, the phone system that we have is the same one that Loveland has. They've been doing it for about two or three years now, so I was very confident that they could do what they needed to do. Um, we haven't got everything up and running in terms of the functionalities that we're going to need, but it does bring back the, the functionalities that were sort of missed. Like if we lose outside connectivity, um, we're still able to dial internal numbers. If the, the, there's, um, connectivity with, um, in four buildings with the, the phone system to do all calls from the phone. Uh, the two buildings, SI and Clear Creek, their, their intercom systems are too old to be able to do that. Uh, we're working on getting the, the piece that's other, the other piece for safety that's there is that we, we will be able to do an all-call to all the phones within each building. So if we have something that we need to call, we can dial a number and then that will go to the speakers on all the phones in that building. So it's just one more level of safety security that we have that will be able to implement there. Um, so we're getting that, that fully going. Um, the other piece is it'll save us about $1,200 a month, um, in costs, believe it or not. So, uh, it's going to save us money, you know, a lot of money in the long run. Uh, we have a new, uh, facility use process. Uh, we have school dude, dude solutions. They changed the name to dude solution, school dude. Uh, so if you need to make, um, if you want to make a facility use request, you go online, you request that you want to become a vendor or a user, we, uh, we approve that or not and then you're able to accomplish all your facility use requests from there. The, the other piece that's good about that is it has a calendar function. So we're putting all of our functions district-wide in there and so internally we can see everything that's going on so that hopefully we reduce the, the scheduling overcomp of each other that's happened the last few years. Um, so we've got that up and going. The turn lane for the junior high is almost done. Um, the city, the, the city needs some poles to be put up to complete the project, but unfortunately the company that they bought poles from for the last 17 years went out of business. Uh, they didn't know. So the asphalt paving is done, the striping is supposed to be done, I think today, and then that'll open that back up. There's still some, some interesting things that will occur because of the, um, the poles on being there, but we're going to make do until they, they come in. Uh, the field turf and track are done extensively except for punchless items. Um, and so we've still got a few things, but, uh, they are done. I don't know if you've been out there, if you get a chance to walk on that field or the track, it's outstanding. Um, the goalposts are scheduled to be painted, the 16th through the 22nd. They've got to scrape them and paint them. We did that back in 2014, so it's, it's time to get it done again. And then we're finalizing the entrance here now. Uh, and for anybody that's been over there, they see that big metal arch and all that. That was donated, built and donated by Mount Technologies here, a local company, which I, we need to get that on the agenda, I just don't know what the value is yet. So I'll have to get that the next time, but it's, it's outstanding. It's a beautiful piece. It really helps set off the, the trunk there. And also we've taken away all those ugly railings that were there that, you know, I'm sure they were pretty one time, but you know, just age, they get old. So we're going to put up for the few times that we need the railings and, and direct people there, we've got some portable, um, standers that will go there that will direct people kind of get in line. Security, we've done a lot this summer. Night lock is installed in all the buildings. For those of you, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about that. Um, so they're, they're on here. Um, I've got a couple of rooms that, one at Five Points where it doesn't slide in, I think it's that, so we're going, they probably come for that. And then I've got one room here that doesn't have one on the door, but we'll get those installed. Lobby guard is in, that's the, the visitor, um, piece for visitor badges and doing background checks on, on visitors. Um, we just got, we got those in about three weeks ago, but with all the other things like registration gateway and everything else that's new and fronts of the building, I didn't want to overload the office staff with getting lobby guard replaced. Plus it's got some programming things that I have to get it done. That's going to take me a couple, three weeks to get that done. But if you're an approved volunteer, you'll have that on there. It's already, you've already got background checks. You don't have to have background there. You just scan your ID and then it'll print out badge for you. If you are a visitor, the intent is, we have to finalize this for meeting tomorrow, we're going to talk about this, but that all visitors will scan in their ID for a badge, um, and then have their picture taken at that time. And then it also forces all visitors to sign out when they leave. So we will have the access, I showed the safety committee today, um, the, the front page that we can look at and so we know how many visitors are in the building, who signed in, who signed out, if there is a list of anybody that's not supposed to go into the building because of a restraining order or something like that, now we put into the system and that can alert other folks. So it's a very powerful system. It's just I've got three weeks or four weeks worth of work to do to get that done. Um, so we, we also had, uh, you know, we purchased security ones for the buildings. Uh, SI and Clear Creek, the entrance areas, it was above the door, there was an opening that made it less secure, so those two buildings, we, we put up wall all the way to the ceiling so it's not wide open there. Um, and then we're working on the maintenance of the doors, um, that we've got, we met with the fire chiefs and police chiefs on July 31st, um, and we talked about what are we doing, where are we going, suggestions, and then what possible capital expenditures long-term we want to look at. Uh, and that was an extra meeting, it's a great meeting to be, for all of us to be at. Um, we've got scheduled training for staff on the 14th and 15th with Officer Don is going to be doing some run high fight training. And then September, October is some more one-on-one things with them. Um, so that's basically that. Um, the high school window process is going to be this side of the building minus the, the library windows. I, I know they still need help, but in order to get us into the, uh, less than $100,000 range, we had to leave these windows out for right now. Those will be, um, built and installed somewhere fall, winter with one of the light rooms in November, December timeframe, uh, just because that's, you know, we knew we couldn't do it during the, the summer, we just didn't have the money to do that and to expend that then. So, and we fit it into their schedule really well in the November, December timeframe. Technology, this summer we bought 800 Chromebooks, which are replacement Chromebooks for those, for that cycle. Uh, that is five points, uh, but it also, we did, we were able to bring all of our classrooms up to a two to one ratio, so there's about 15 Chromebooks or so in each room. Uh, there may be some outliers there as we go through, we'll find out, because we have enough Chromebooks that we brought back on the replacement cycle that we could use for a year or two to make sure everybody's up to that. So that's really what the, the 800 Chromebooks were. Um, we replaced eight projectors this summer. We bought five interactive Sharp displays for the six through 12 buildings and then five clever touches for Clear Creek SI or Clear Creek, uh, Dennis and Five Points that they are testing out as a media replacement for, uh, Smartboards. So we're doing a pilot project on those. We replaced the computers in the junior high library. Uh, we finally got the legs today for the tables. The tables came in a week ago, the legs, they said were for a 36-inch round table, which doesn't work on a 100-inch, [inaudible]. Um, we also replaced all the computers in the junior high computer labs. So those, uh, those two labs there, so we've got that, that we've done. We also, uh, we got 20 laptops that we purchased that were either replacements and/or, um, for new staff that we've gotten. We have about 20 desktops that we're replacing, uh, throughout the district that are maintenance, custodians, uh, food service, things like that that are under, been broken. We've been, uh, patching them together until that. Uh, so that's the technology piece that we did this summer. Uh, Clear Creek, we're waiting on final approval for the previous wave or the entrance wave for the modular. Um, that's backed us up to at, at best amid September or even the late September probably, uh, occupancy for that. Um, we have most of the equipment, you know, in terms of tables, desks, uh, cabinets, all that are sitting in the gym over there at Clear Creek. So we're ready to get in there as soon as we can get things going. Uh, it backed us up a little bit because we found the gas line for the building underneath where flip-filing was, so Duke had to run a new gas line. And then Duke backed out a three-phase service for a single-phase usage, so they had to go back and redo it. So Duke is not running their electric yet, which that might be stressful kind of if we didn't, if we weren't already behind. So what, uh, what Pac Dan's doing is they're trying to get as much work done so that we can open up that entranceway there that leads into the preschool playground so that that's, because that's one of our main entrances and exits early morning, well, actually all day because most people go out there for the playgrounds and all that. So they've got most of that work done. We're trying to get that all done before, uh, school starts next week so that that'll be open for, uh, for the students to play.
On that point, how are we going to do without the additional classroom space?
Well, we are, we're doing like we ended last year. We've got, uh, I think art, art, um, technology and maybe one other thing on a cart and then we're just, there's no conference room, there's, you know, they're, they're tight, but they're, they can make do.
But from a preschool perspective, what are we?
From a preschool perspective, I think we have four openings, I believe, in that, the current classroom that they have.
Before you would have.
Before we have. So we were anticipating that probably being in the, the October, November timeframe anyway. Um, so we were going to need these big time, starting in October, November, which we should have those up and running by then.
So. Correct, because we've got, we've got a lot in the pipeline.
I mean, we, we're fully anticipating that other classroom to be open by, no later than December or January. Uh, so that's, uh, but yeah, so we're opening Clear Creek the same way we closed it last year in the same locations. It's just it's, uh, reform. Any, any other questions about my utility of staff?
There's a lot.
Yes, sorry.
I do have some questions. Um, with lobby guard, I was shocked at how the cost of it and how cheap it was compared to when the whole discussion was talking to Tara about that to begin with.
Right.
Because how apparent it was involved when we first started looking.
Correct.
That's amazing how much less it is now compared to four years ago.
Yes.
Um, so what it is now, there was, it was almost $30,000. Is that just in the budget of what we already had? So there's nothing?
That just came out of the, the $400,000 that I have, I think.
Right, and then we talked about it too. We did receive a, um, year of workers' comp.
Correct.
Refund this year of the $400,000 and then that is more than normal brand that is that they had given because of how we pay our, and stuff that, you know, for us, suggest for us to use towards, um, safety. So I'd love to know that we have that number in the [inaudible]. And so there'll probably be some other things in safety [inaudible] year to do some rest of that [inaudible] so we'll be up for that as well as.
Correct.
That's awesome. I think this is like, you know.
Yeah, that's great.
Jamie was sharing with me, she's on the safety committee, that there's different levels, because I've been a date public job thing and there's, there's more extensive levels there, I'm assuming, that I'm not sure, you know, just there's different levels in different schools. I think that no matter what, knowing that your license is going to be scanned and it's going to do a background check.
Correct.
That's fabulous. I, you know, it doesn't, I'm not sure that we need the same levels that all districts around us need, but knowing that it's going to be doing background checks on everybody, I think it's going to give all parents and community members a calmness and a peace of mind that we're doing all that we can. So I appreciate looking into that and money going in that direction. Um, does this change, I know the question will be asked, does this change the lunchtime procedure at all with parents coming into lunch or are we keeping that the same?
Same procedure.
Same procedure? Okay. Um, with the, you mentioned Officer Don doing some training.
Right.
With the staff. Is this going to be something, back to our discussion when we had brought in the, um, officer cut off earlier, is this something that like all of our staff is going to be going through, where are we at in that process?
Well, every, everybody, because it's, it's the 14th and 15th, which are two days before school, and all staff are supposed to be working, so we have to make sure that all staff is, is, can get, that can get there, can get there. I mean, there, there'll be some bus drivers that are running, there'll be some custodians that have to do custodial type duties, but.
Right.
You know, the most of the food services are here, they should be able to make it. All, all other teachers and all other cost line staff should be able to make it, you know, office staff probably not.
Right, but it's not an optional, like it's something that everybody's going to cycle through.
No, and they need, right, they're, they're, as part of the training they have to have. I mean, we have to get this done. This, this is part of this, this training is what satisfies the state requirement for the theoretical that we have to do every three years.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Um, so with the technology, um, with our long-term plan, is our, I mean, a few years back, we brought in the idea of bringing your own technology.
Correct.
Where are we at with that? Like how many students, elementary, I'm assuming, I won't let my now fifth grade bring technology because I know it will be totally broken.
Correct.
So I'm assuming elementary, we don't have quite as much participation, but do we have, like, some in the SI, junior high, high school, like what kind of participation do we have there?
I, I don't know the percentages in terms of what the percentage, but we have a lot of students, six through 12, that bring their own technology, uh, but we have a lot that don't and it, and it's not for any other reason than is they just, the parents, some of the parents just don't want their students to bring their Chromebook or laptop to school.
Right.
Yeah, and even if we press, even though we push it, because a lot of our delivery method now is electronic.
We have to provide that.
It's all required to, uh, [inaudible].
Correct.
So that's why, you know, we encourage it, but we still have to have that on.
Yeah.
For kids.
So it's, sure. Is our goal, like if we have the two to one ratio, should that need, that need of every student that needs one, has one?
I have, I have not, I have not encountered that concern in terms of not having enough. I mean, we have carts that are available for, for, um, study halls and all that other. There's, you know, we have other, um, here in the libraries typically there's extra Chromebooks that they can use. I, no one has brought that up, they haven't, don't have any kind of thing on to use during the day at this point in time. Our, our anticipation of this is based on Amy and Cheryl's recommendation as well as, you know, the building administrators. If we keep it at a two to one ratio, I think they're going to be happy, especially as long as we keep up with that. Right now we have a four-year rotation on Chromebooks and that's why we need to spend that 160 or so thousand dollars every year on the replacement cycle because it's taken us a while to get to the two to one, but we just have to then maintain that, that, that cycle of replacement so that they're not using things that are broken and don't work. Uh, you know, we just finally got rid of all those, those, um, chrome-colored Samsungs, which were, those were a challenge at the beginning and they're really bad by the time we got rid of them. And we still, we probably found about 100 of those around the district this summer.
So we're currently at the two to one ratio and we're on a cycle and we have it in the five-year forecast and we can replace those a certain amount every year to keep us on that two to one ratio?
Correct, that's correct.
Awesome, okay, okay. I just want to make sure that I understand that from what you were saying. And we're continuing to ask, ask anybody that wants to BYOT if it's right for you.
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Excellent, well, we're going to move back to the intended, because we have our two presenters here tonight. First, it's our honor to bring in educational partner, which is the Warren County Career Center. Extension of education here at Spring Earl High School, uh, and Spring Earl Schools with some amazing career technical programs. And we have several students that attend there. And tonight, Robin Frederick, who is the Assistant Director of Secondary Education, who I had the honor of working with for eight years of upper tech before she went to Warren County, is here tonight to introduce one of our own, who's a student at the Warren County Career Center, talking to her. So I'm the third opening.
I just want to say something really important, working with you guys now, that I'm the, the satellite supervisor, and that's my full-time job, and I'm gonna have a presence here for this year, looking forward to working with you guys to expand programs, you know, I'm gonna be in the schools and I'm gonna be in, in the classrooms, on these FaceTime lines, and I want that presence of those Warren County kids, when they're in our classroom here, to, to also to be, the more presence on campus as well. So I'm really looking forward to that. And it is my pleasure, when Dan asked me to bring a student, a springboard student here, I, I thought of Dan Gialli personally. Anna has been an exemplary student, two years, that, that she was with us. I'm gonna come to, to know her and love her, you know, as a student and, since the time that she was one of our student ambassadors, which meant that she, she was president of our events, she helped volunteer on her own time, took time off work in the evenings so that she could do orientation, open house, veterans, veterans breakfast and those kinds of things. And so I'm gonna introduce Ms. Anna, and she's got some excellent news to tell you. So, Anna?
Thank you. So like you said, I went to the Warren County Career Center Veterinary Science Program. I just graduated, I just graduated a couple months ago. I'll tell you the good news now. So I was actually just hired as my instructor's assistant in the veterinary science program. We do surgeries twice a week for our community. We do it for the community society. Do it twice a week, two local vets on their days off come in and teach our students everything you need to know about surgery. So that's, that was a new thing this year that my teacher had brought to our program, which was obviously incredible for us. And for me, I'd chosen to go to the Career Center like everybody else, which I always think how proud I am that everyone can go to the Career Center, because, you know, you're not kind of forced to go into that. It's something that choosing is uncomfortable, but the juniors are about to start, and I just remember it being so uncomfortable, because it's just so many of the schools are coming in as one school and you don't know what to expect. I never knew that it was such a great experience that I had. I loved every second of it. Like I, like she said, I'm the student ambassador, so there are a lot of opportunities like that. I went to every orientation, so I welcomed the new juniors and kind of gave them a presentation about what our program is about. I talked to the school board, actually in the eighth grade, I talked in front of the Springboro School Board about raising awareness for animal abuse and it's for a project that I did, twenty percent profit, Christmas goal. So, yeah, it's weird that I'm back. So, yeah, the Career Center academically, I kind of struggled as a child, which was weird, because I always kind of, I liked it A's, I really liked it A's, and I found myself struggling to get there. And then when I came to the Career Center, it just seemed like I was where I was going to be, like I just, I really thrived there. And I didn't have to do it was because how today I was cutting animals and cutting into them, you know? It sounds awful, but I love it. But the Career Center definitely did a lot for me. I got to speak at graduation, which I am still so excited about, don't know how I did it, I don't really know. But I loved it. I really love all the people and I'm so excited to be an employee. I can't wait for, you know, the numbers, even for Springboro and all the other schools to kind of go out to get more kids interested. It's definitely one of those things, you know, college is kind of, you can contest, like, you know, we gotta go to college after high school, and the Career Center opens up this whole thing where you don't have to go to college, you know? A lot of people, my program is one of few that have to go on to college, like I'm going to Sinclair, we registered med tech, but I graduated as a med assistant. But there are people like the welding, carpentry, they go out right in the field after work. And senior year you do placement or replacement, so I was in the disaster vet clinic, working with wildlife, exotic animals, my senior year. So that's something that I can take with me at tech school that the other kids don't have, and I kind of have that, I won't be going in as blind. So it definitely, it, it got me and everybody else really a kickstart into the real world. And they expect so much of us, like this was my uniform, I'd wear it every single day except for Fridays, we could wear jeans no holes, those no shoes and our Warren County Career Center shirts. So they really pushed the professional side of things. Not a lot of things fly, because I mean, Career Center feels very much like, you know, this is the real world. You're not gonna go to class and act like you're in the real world, like this is gonna be an all-in-one thing. And I think that's helped a lot of people, including me. I figured out kind of who I was and where I fit in, and I think that's really surprising for people in high school, it's not really normal thing. I was just in the car with someone, they were like, oh, I don't know, I don't even know. And, you know, she's like fifty years old. So I was blessed and I had to have a passion and be good at it. It's one thing, passion is another to be good at it. So I figured out pretty young, and the Career Center is definitely the best choice I ever made. So I'm a person.
Anna, thank you. Thank you. I have some questions, but first of all, I gotta ask a couple things. Who's with you?
Uh, this is, this is my friend, her husband.
I thought she should call, call me Robin, that's the, she's in that floor.
No, he's in.
No, I can't. This is my mother, who I love so dearly.
Yeah.
But, I mean, nothing would have been possible about this woman. She didn't get mad at you when I caught a bunny, an injured bunny when I was six years old. Actually, she probably didn't get mad at me, I didn't let you know. Okay. She supported it at least somewhat, but.
Remember that chicken you had one night?
Don't tell her. And this is my boyfriend, he, I actually met him at the Career Center, and that's another thing, I picked him, you know, from the farthest school away, but all those schools kind of bring in so many different people, and I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't have that handled if I didn't. So.
Now, the exotic animal that you worked at?
Yes.
What was the craziest animal you met? Or the weirdest animal you worked with?
A bat.
A bat?
There was a bat that came in, he was frozen in the back of some guy's truck. And so he came in and we had to thaw him out, and we kept him for like a week or so, until the weather got better.
Really?
Yeah. But I mean, we saw everything, from lizards, the tech that I worked with, he was in the circus, so he were lions, alligator, I mean, literally everything. So it was an incredible experience.
Thank you. Question from our board.
I just wanna say, you're amazing. You should be like on a video for Warren County Career Center, because I just think there, and I was just talking to Charles, I was just talking with him about this before the board meeting, that there is a stereotype around the Career Center that needs to be removed. And you are an amazing spokesperson for why the Career Center is not what people think it is. And so I, that video needs to be shared with a lot of people, because what you said is exactly it. You know exactly where you're going in life, and you've had these experiences, and the passion that you have for what you're doing, that you had, you know, Springboro High School is amazing, but it might not be the right fit for everybody. So that you had this, you know, the fact that you had this opportunity and the training that you had is incredible. So thank you for sharing with us, and hopefully more people can feel your energy and we can share that out with other people, because a lot of people don't understand that.
Yeah. She's special. But there are a lot of other kids that do, they, they, they get up and they talk and they, it's just, you're right, that stereotype is so outdated that these kids, that they, they enter the workplace and they're making actually more money than those college kids that they send for six, ten years to make. But I just wanna tell you, being in the veterinarian field is great, but your presence, your communication skills, your, your ambiance that you exhibit, I mean, your mother and your teacher, which are your boyfriend, but your, your family, they should be most proud of how you hold yourself out, because that, and that, that will do success for you.
Nice job. Nice. I see like two of you, Mrs. Frederick, and you seem to have the more primitive picture.
Oh, I see, I saw that.
You're gonna be Facebook, thanks.
I didn't want her to graduate, to be honest with you.
All right. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
And actually, I want to say, Sandra's with her, is on this twelve-point ASE certification, and did a different path through scheduling, so she's very successful in that.
He's gonna be able to work in any part of the nation with big time stuff. We're talking transmission, so we got that on the list nicely. All right, our next presentation, I'll start off by saying, they want me to apologize, because they're gonna go for more than an hour tonight. And I'd like to bring up at this time Kim Sellers and Wendy Ford. They're gonna be talking, giving our resource coordinator update, not just taking, not giving that all. Kim Sellers works with us in the Warren County ESC, she's the coordinated care program director. And along with Wendy Ford, our amazing mental health coordinator, they put some things in place here at school that were second to none, I think, for Southwest Ohio, some of the resources we need for our students. With that, Wendy, was your first speaker tonight, you were.
Yep.
Kim, the floor is yours.
You don't wanna introduce the program? Hi, it's nice to be here. Not discussing that, I don't think I'll be as exciting as the man that you've been working with. But I'm gonna get down to say that these are folders, and I'm gonna first have you take a look at the graph that it will be on the right side, the group charts. I'm gonna be sending, so.
Two of them to figure out those two different things.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess the other, this is just for your surgery company, it's not yet, and I, we obviously have a PFC, I brought for sure, so I always bring those back. So I'm sure you're probably aware, it was discussed sometime, probably more than a year ago, we began, historically, we had resource coordinators in a lot of districts years ago. And it wasn't under me, I inherited a few of them after the program, and everybody had under ten thousand dollars, which is to raise the density of families that we get through the fire department jobs and services. Those dollars actually went away years ago, I wasn't involved in that, and I went out and meeting only two years ago at Belton County, and somebody mentioned services that were under ten thousand dollars, and I looked at my superintendent, and I thought those ones had gone, so I don't know, let's talk to the director of jobs and services in our county, see what, what we can do. So the context of Warren County, she was the new director there, she was doing a few years. We explained to her what the resource coordinator had, and sort of played what we would like to do. She was very supportive, jumped right on it and asked me to put together a book that she was considering. We went there, we asked for a lot of money, we asked for a lot of resource coordinators to give that, and she agreed. So when I had met with Mr. Warren and Wendy prior to starting this, I went around to each district and explained, this is what Warren did, and the district can send fifteen thousand dollars per resource coordinator, ten thousand dollars to pay for the rest. That's for a full-time person with medical benefits, retirement, everything, so we absorb the majority of the cost of PFC, for ten and funding and whatnot. And everybody's salary is a little different based on their license, their years of experience, their, but you have three. And so I wanna explain this, because it might be a little misleading, the first chart here that has the yellow is a resource coordinator spending for school, that is not what you're paying, but before you know it, it is ten thousand, that is how much money is that they are spending into your district. So if you see, it's obviously very disproportionate compared to the other districts, and it should be, because you had three, actually you only had, I'm gonna say two and a half, because we were, unfortunately, you know, successful with one position, and the opposite money, and I spoke about it, it was so late in the year, we were remembering higher weeks I was waiting, so this year has been time being a quality candidate, that person being utilized there, these services. So we took our time this summer and have found somebody who we're very excited about. She's actually the director of school-based mental health services at Access Council, she will leave there, and then the license is nine years, if that agency is coming to help your district to serve kids. Not only that, we kind of bump things up and we're gonna provide counseling services that are charged to your district this year, because we're gonna be looking at any accreditation through card, which stands for the trust of other accreditation for rehabilitation facilities. Very big, they're gonna keep these little approval, when you get that, kind of like the end-all, be-all. We decided, let me start this, we wanna go big, we wanna get accreditation, and they're coming in, shows probably therapy better. So we need to be doing therapy, or provide that to your district, and all the other districts, and kind of do that this year as well. So we do appreciate your partnership, and I, I did want you to see on the graph, you can point out that that's not money going out, but that's coming in. On the second page.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why do we get so much more than everybody else?
Because we have three.
But like, why do we get more people? Like why do we, we have more people?
We have to, we have to.
Good job.
The dollars were there, and Wendy, under her leadership, said, we have this need based upon our numbers, based upon the buildings, we asked for them.
Yeah, I was looking at five, we don't own every building. Well, sure, I'll explain that to you. I, I, I'm sorry, because it was very, very proactive. When I went around, I met with each of our, and it, privately first, and said, this is what your portion will be, or you want, everybody said yes, but you guys came back and said three, and I always followed my chair, and I'm like, well, I don't know, and that's when I had to ask for the ten, we asked for that allocation, and it was a pretty big one. Other districts might have Springboro, and they wanted to come in, and, you know, these kind of ways. So you are, so you got the bar high, and, and I think this, this says a lot too, because I thought, okay, with three up in this year, if the data shows that at the end of the year, are they going, going to utilize and truly benefit? But I think that the data really shows, I'm gonna switch to third, and then go back to something. We, part of the reason we did that, is we, I'm sure you did that in the health department last year, we've never had that before, so I have it myself, and I have three resource coordinators, and then I partner with solutions, and then I have drug alcohol as well. So we've never really had everything under one umbrella, so that was part of why we wanted to have three, we wanted to be able to offer whatever we did, so Kim and I could be like, okay, because whatever we do, we do, amazing. So that's kind of why we did what we did. So they, the chart that's with, you have the Springboro, you're like, it's all the way over here, it's on the chart. So that, you had served, our resource coordinators had served a hundred and eighty-eight address units last year. They were brand new, so you gotta remember that there was a little bit of a learning curve in August, I was trying to train them, they had their ground money. They fill out, the way it works is they fill out a PRC form, stands for prevention intentions.
Prevention or contingency.
It's ten thousand. Basically, a family has to be two-hundred-and-fifty percent above the federal property grant line. And public, if there was a lump, there is, has to be a lump, and also anybody who puts in a foster care, kinship placement, or regularized lunch, automatically qualified. So those are the kids that regular will bill for, students that regular will bill for. The fifteen thousand dollars is given to your district is to serve, so they're not necessarily, so when a hundred and eighty-eight thousand coming kids were, that were served, so there was way more, and I probably, if that data, if you're interested, there were a lot more kids that were served, that was through ten dollars. So obviously, Springboro is, is winning, and like I said, we, that we went with, really excited to fail this year for the rest of the year. And then on the last page, I love this chart, because it breaks down your, your ages, your age groups, so, looks like Dennis Elementary, but it's very high, the age to ten range, that would be yours, right? Yes. Yes, okay. Age to ten, so that would be more in college, and then followed by the pricing, like five to seven, and then that size group would have been thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, the intermediate, probably eleven to thirteen, and then seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, so those now. So that kind of shows your, your ages that are served. Again, you can count around, I mean, go back to that second page, the red, the red corner. This shows the specific needs of resources that were addressed, so I, I put this in another Google checking form, and I had dropped in, and you put in the check, try to find the areas that other folks are, there's another category that kind of catch all, but these have been paying areas that really serve students and families, support and kinship support, so kinship support is used right now, but in all of our districts, and for whatever reason, I can fit, you know, in there, but it'll be, it'll be a big part of, you know, families, you know, the incarceration or overdose, the patient issues, we see[1762.41] our districts, and for whatever reason, I can fit in a million, I don't know, that is going to make sense, it's a big part of the, you know, the family, the, you know, the incarceration or overdose, the patient issues, we see a lot more right here, we have some old, husband's, where you can be hit, so we're, when they're in, families are all over, getting food, the, to make a massive hierarchy, we need food, clothing, shelter, you cannot, every basic needs that you can learn. And so the whole premise behind resource coordinators is to eliminate any non-academic barriers that have to process all these kids, come to school, and be ready to learn. So that's just for individual data. And then I have the other one, aggregated, this is all of our resource coordinators together, there were six hundred and fifty-four totally served. Again, if you're serving, that may just serve to you, you all have, that's pretty great. That's my duplicate, there are a lot of kids that we serve every month, so I just gave the numbers down by the month. On the right hand side, all the services that we provide. And then the second page is satisfaction surveys, and so I should have almost pulled out spring row and bottom, and there's a lot of great numbers being made. But as you can see, I had these clients that were sourced to rate their overall satisfaction regarding resources, resource coordinator program, and it was all four to fives, which is the highest, and then they made with the overall experience. And then a hundred percent felt that they were improved in their child and functioning across, which is very interesting. And then on the third page, I just have comments that were made, and really identified parents. We also did stakeholder sort rates by district, I know you pulled one out, they didn't want to have a superintendents, and so all our, we go to the point, I think one of each district, and it's very good, very good job as well. We sent you a place to, where, but we're being terrorists, only because they have the highest amount of free lunch, that issue, and then other area that we were looking at some issue with, and then security. So because for us, that is very, very, very flat for us, very common, so that's going to be, we go to conference on that, and our resources, that, we have heard that, I think that resource coordinators are fortunate about the fact that they're being right here, so for the parents that don't feel comfortable, we can just more have meetings, we have a lot of our family there in this situation, they can live, they're kind of meeting, they're basically, that we're, we're helping others.
I want to thank both, and the board will have some questions, I'm sure, but I do want to also add to this. In my career, I've had a chance to work with seven E S Cs. The support that Tom Isaacs is this superintendent has given us, as well as the programs, is the best I've seen. Kim Sellers is one of those examples. When she first met with us, she had an enthusiastic approach to mental health, had ideas, and went forward with it. Went forward with it because of the confidence of Wendy Ford. Wendy has the pulse, not only the school district, but the community, she works with every community organization we have here, and just look what we've made, as well as the pastorial group, she sits in every expulsion hearing that I have. She is the best advocate, as well as the best opponent sometimes for these students, in making sure they understand what's next in their future, what choices they make. It's not a work of both these people, and this is quite recorded, to show what we've been doing with this community. Questions for them?
I remember asking about this when I saw it in the Warren County E S C contract last year, because there was, I didn't understand, because it was forty-five thousand dollars, and I said, what exactly is that? Because it didn't make sense that we give you an entire one for forty-five thousand dollars. So you had said that a grant was supporting this, but I didn't know what the grant was, and this is fabulous, fabulous to have this full understanding, and they, I said, how can you argue with fifteen thousand dollars a year to put towards a counselor? And the quality of these counselors is amazing, so you hired very, very well, and I just think this data shows for itself what an impact it's having on our, supporting our administrators, our teachers, and clearly our students. So thank you for bringing it to spring row and for supporting it, this is really amazing for us.
Yeah.
Thank you for the comments, if you have questions, or if you have, I know they're not all specific to our district, but they're extremely powerful, so thank you for your non-shore, very board committee, it's a reality. Appreciate it.
We'll support five.
And I will tell you, we're growing, this is the great program for me last year, and I hope to have one this year, so we hope to continue, or I've never been for it, but I'm, yeah, seventy, and we're spending another capacity, so I set out everything that Mr. Warren said about here, and it's wonderful, and great, it's really a great partner, and I really want my kids to share, so I hope that I have.
Well, I think that you see a difference in how things are approached because of Wendy, and it's not just the day's work for Wendy, she truly cares for our kids, and that's why you see it in, like Dan said, in the expulsion hearings, it's not always just rah rah, I mean, it's the current reality.
That's why I heard.
Yeah, exactly. But yeah, so thank you Wendy for all that you do for us.
Thank you both for being here, I was kind of excited that you wanted to stay for the whole week, so thank you.
It's actually my anniversary today.
Happy anniversary.
President Warren, you would like to add for the transcript report?
July was a very busy month, and I'm worried that every month that John has a busy month, it's always a busy month. And so for the length of July, we brought in just under ten million dollars, we can try to back close all the time, but they don't access for the first half. And we received, we have fourteen point seven million as our closing end cash balance for July as well. So I want to go briefly through, because we'll get off a lot of the topics that John had mentioned, some of our larger expenditures since July was a very expensive month, but the next one is more mountain, front heavy on our expenditures that we are getting ready for the school year. So our benefits were higher, we're all about three hundred thousand dollars higher, that's because we do the first half of the H S A deposits first, we do a first half of July and a second half of January, so those two months are usually outliers due to that from those H S A deposits for that benefit. Our purchase services, we spent four hundred and seventy-two thousand for the month for different places that we have in our district. We have the two plus pieces that are paid at the beginning of the year, July, month one hundred and thirty, and then you have one that has one more year left, those two hundred and thirty-two thousand, those will be paid in July. We also have monthly modular meters, now for our first modular that we already have, and then our second one that we're just getting, that started in July as well. We have a copier lease that we are currently paying, that will be paid out in July nineteen, so we're winding down on that. And then we also had our laptop lease that we paid at twenty thousand dollars, that was our last laptop lease, and our teacher laptops that we had purchased a few years ago in this plan. We also pay our property insurance out of dollars, that was a hundred and forty-three thousand, so that one is also a long time thing for a year. In our supplies category, we spent fifty-five thousand on some classroom supplies that we're starting to get the classrooms ready, also seventy-one thousand in software, education software, that was twenty-two thousand in textbooks that we also paid out July. Equipment was a very busy month, because John had paid on most of it, because we paid laundry art, we're, we're here for that, is that just a one-time cost?
Yes.
Twenty-nine thousand for laundry art, we also got night block, it's all we paid for, twenty-six thousand, we paid for the still light, the weight field, that was forty-one thousand for the year. We had installation for our modular, that we are cleaning right now, that was twenty-four thousand. And then we had two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that was spent out between the pro books, computers, projectors, the laptops, that's also all the raw money out in July. So that's why it was a little bit of an outlier, we also have a lot of other supplies and expenses like that, that are also, the alcohol is still, it's still, it's just tacky, so it's, so those were the financials for July. I also have a third donation for, 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 regarding from Dunkin' Donuts, that's a hundred and fifty dollars. And then also, we have two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Ryland, and a hundred dollar donation from Jim, who can handle to board breakfast and snack, and drink.
Is there a motion to accept number one? Two, four, three. Consider it.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
Badger, Floddy?
Yes. I'm staying close to halfway, thanks.
President Warren, to the director of human resources for personnel report, to then be voted on, and then the two athletic reports after that, vote as a whole. DeSaster?
Okay, so we are winding down hiring season, we have hired seventeen teachers, three speech psychologists, and a school segment certificate, like, that is all, the, you want to connect on classified, by the definition of an education assistant, but there are some that that still, but tonight I'm going to present to you the August personnel report. We have a retirement, the first couple lines are retirement, but I wanted to highlight that Gaye Tyree has been with us for over twenty years as an educational assistant, which I'd like to be, that's the real part of work. So she wrote a ready letter of resignation, and her experience here, that's, she will do this. Line picture twelve are more classified certified resignation. Line thirteen is approval to employ Dr. Malone, who will be helping out at the buy-on basis. Line fourteen through forty-three are again more produced staff that we are very pleased with resignation, contract, just simply amount of days, and extended days. Line forty-four through forty-five, those are the last remaining stragglers from the income, show this year we're Generation Z, and it's really good. And then line forty-six through fifty are a few leads and accesses to the next year.
Is there a motion to accept five point one? Certainly. Second.
Second.
I'm just curious, have you had your exit interviews or the recognition, were there any insights deemed notable in those conversations?
Um, with, for the certificate, which they did, I think they got a lot of, turned in, and all that, get more from them, but again, one was moving closer home, one was leaving education, being a teacher, but she's going to be excellent sales, still education, curriculum sales, and then our last one, I think it was that one.
The interesting thing, we talked about this the other day, on Wednesday, yesterday, we had new teacher orientation, and new teachers coming in, so Buzz Prylers and so forth in there. And in the three years I've been here, I've only seen three years, it was the smallest group we've had in three years. People aren't leaving because they have a task, that's much. And for whatever reason that may be, we had an outstanding group, but the room wasn't jam-packed.
And I am getting some patterns of ways we can improve, more communication to the teachers, so they don't feel lost, so we're getting some good information.
Thanks for doing us.
Anderson?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Next two.
I'm going to present the athletic group personnel report, because as you can see, there's two nominations, and the last three are some of our contracts, along with the, or can't be paid out.
Is there a motion to accept five two, five three?
Second.
Okay.
Your question?
Again, so.
Yes.
I did have a question. Can we, once we're done, like, once we've hired everybody with the athletics, just do like what you did last year, and do like a summary of the different sports with the coaches? There's usually some questions around the number of coaches per sport, just once the hiring is done, like for ball sports, just have that summary again? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we don't, it would have to be bought, the board, and add any yourself, so we can't do anything but go around, or argue. So we can still provide that first, but people know specifically, there was everyone.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, sure. Okay, okay, thanks.
No, I think you can, so, I know it was already, it's just that they have all the kids, so it's, right now, we just have the little ones, so one is all for you.
Yes.
Badger, Floddy?
Yes.
I'm staying.
President, the exec director of district operations tonight, or excuse me, the director of instruction, representing Andrea Cook tonight, Chuck Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Schreer. For the members who have in front of you the contracts for our schools, for public credit plus, we have one from St. Clair, one from Miami, one from Wright State, and if you remember from past year, Cedarville does not actually do an M O B, but we do have their agreement for their reals, and all of that, so that's all we have, please. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept six? Any discussion? Hold on.
Anderson?
Yes. Yes.
We've not heard much of Carter, secretary of district operations yet, I'd like to call upon Johnson now, for the next caller.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration tonight, I have two items. One is the approval of the band booster concession agreement that we talked about in work session, and then number two is, seven point two is our annual approval of our bus stops.
Is there a motion to accept seven one, seven two?
Seven.
John, we got the bus stop to conveniently place.
As we always do.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, go yes.
Thank you.
Anderson?
Yes.
Badger, Floddy?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
President, under eight point one, the approval salary increase of exempt staff, traditionally in the past, our exempt staff will follow what the S C E A receives. Last board meeting, this board approved two point two five salary increase with the S C E A, we recommend tonight to your consideration the approval of a staff against two point two five percent salary increase to the exempt staff in the next two years.
Second. Is there a motion, Charles?
No. Oh, good, no, like, you want to, you're a big one. Second.
So, remind me who this would.
I sent a lot of stuff, and then I have Mr. First, and.
This is the host.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Can we pull some of these?
Hold on.
Anderson?
Yes.
Badger, Floddy?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there the announcements? We have no announcements, so.
Just happy that all the contract was settled, I thank Karen, Dan, everybody on that committee, there are a few on the committee, and Mr. Colonge there, who took two days off work to take the state mediation process, but I'm sure it was educational. So, thanks to everybody and the union representatives and their team, and we'll just go ahead and start it off.
Hi, to me, it's just been fun the last couple of weeks, seeing, being around campus again, and seeing the life, the teachers in the classrooms, driving by schools, and seeing cars, and the athletes out in the window, and without the sensory garden, if you've not been there yet, there's color, there's stuff that soon is going to be open for the kids, so it's just neat to see the community coming together and ready to kick off another year. And it's not, I don't think it's in every school that you would see, I was in here this morning, picking up my kids' yearbooks, and to see, I was going to ask Mr. Marcus something, and he was right there with doing parking passes in the middle of it with the kids, and kids were just surrounding him, and that's the type of staff we have, and I appreciate that. So it was just me, I asked him, my staff person, I said, oh, I didn't realize you're state, you're, you already started work, and she said, oh, I didn't, I'm just here helping with your books. That's the kind of stuff that we have here, so it was just, it was just cool, it just is refreshing to be back and to start off another year. And good luck to our kids heading off to college, so that's exciting too, new season of life, so, good stuff.
Again, this kind of echo what this staff says in terms of, just wishing everybody a great start to the school year, it's an exciting time, we're getting back in buildings, and it's great to see the energy around campus, so just we can wish everybody a great start to the school year. Again, I want to say my thanks to the presenters tonight, and both those things were wonderful to hear about the ways. Again, I want to extend my thanks to the presenters tonight, and both those things were wonderful to hear about the ways that we're continuing to meet our students' needs. And just appreciate everybody's hard work, and clearly going above and beyond to do that, so just really thank that. And then, on the subject of negotiations, I didn't want to bore you guys with quite a long commentary. So apologize for those of you that are stuck here to hear this, but because we recently agreed a contract with the S C A and the S E A, you know, I just, first and foremost, wanted to say thanks to all the people that were involved in the process for their hard work. Really happy that we have an agreement in place, and we can return our focus to making this another successful school year for our students. But with that being said, I wanted to take a few moments to address a narrative about the process that I've seen. It's taken hold up there, because it's actually quite inconsistent with my experience in the process. And so, you know, I've seen and heard a variety of claims, social media, newspapers, that sort of thing, since our last meeting, that the board was not informed throughout the process, or that the negotiating team was not operating in good faith, maybe dragging their feet, or that you were trying to nickel and dime more teachers and staff. And normally, I wouldn't feel compelled to respond to those sorts of assertions. But since my experience with the process was just so different, I really felt the need to offer my perspective. Somebody who was present, as Charles said, at both of the mediation sessions, I feel that, you know, I sort of have a unique position, or uniquely positioned to share my perspective publicly with you tonight. So the process really began many months ago, when our superintendent, our treasurer, our legal counsel, they initiated the discussion with the board in order to develop our objectives around salary and insurance for the upcoming negotiations with our unions. During that discussion, the board was presented with a plan that would actually try to remedy some of the issues with our district's salary schedules. Specifically, our administration felt that our starting salaries were too low when compared to other districts in our area, and that our less tenured employees were really susceptible to taking jobs with other districts who were able to offer them considerably higher salaries than our schedules allow. So against that backdrop, our superintendent and our treasurer developed new salary schedules, aimed at addressing some of those issues that I previously highlighted, while taking great care to ensure that all employees benefited over the life of the new schedules, and not just those of the more junior. So if implemented, these schedules would help make us more competitive with those surrounding districts, and would have provided a significant salary increase to all teachers and staff that was well above the average increase that we see in comparable districts across the state. So as you can imagine, implementing these changes would prove to be quite expensive. And so in order to partially offset the cost of the new schedules, the superintendent and treasurer proposed making changes to our health insurance offering as it pertains to the spouses of our employees. Currently, there's no restrictions on our spouses taking health insurance through the district, and as a result, we spend an excess of a million dollars annually to insure over two hundred and seventy spouses. So those two hundred and seventy spouses, these are folks that are on family plans, and they include the spouses, that actually represents a minority of our staff within our district staff and teachers within our district. And so the majority of people, our teachers and staff, are not receiving the benefit being provided by that billion dollars in spending. So according to the State Employment Relations Board, over fifty percent of the districts in Ohio have some form of spousal restriction on their insurance. It's something that I experienced personally at my employer, becoming increasingly more common in both the public and private sectors. So what was proposed to the board in those early conversations was placing a restriction on working spouses of our district employees that have access to health insurance through their employers. So rather than have the financial burden of that spouse's insurance picked up by the district, the intent was to shift that burden to the spouse's employer, which in many instances is a for-profit entity. So to be clear, the proposed changes would have only affected working spouses with access to insurance through their employer. There would be no impact to any of our employees or any of the children that are covered by our plans. So after this was presented, the board agreed with the proposal and charged our negotiating team to seek these changes through the collective bargaining process. The direction from the board initially, in that initial meeting, was clear, it was consistent, there was no dissent. So with that framework, our superintendent, treasurer, and legal counsel entered into negotiations with our unions. So it's important to note that in this process of negotiation, there's a lot of other things that are covered that don't involve salaries and insurance. The items, in my opinion, are more administrative in nature, such as the workday structure, the planning periods, handling complaints, buildings, those sorts of things. And so in my opinion, while those things are certainly important, the items are really best left to our administrators to handle, as they don't really rise to the strategic level that a board ought to be focused on. So as negotiations got underway, the board was updated on multiple occasions about the process and the progress being made. The updates came in the form of emails from our superintendent, and in-person conversations during the executive sessions. Since there wasn't really any movement or traction on the matters of salary and insurance, the updates remained pretty high level, given that the progress mostly centered around those aforementioned administrative items. Again, since those items really shouldn't be a board's focus, in my opinion, I personally had no issues whatsoever with the level of information shared with the board during these updates. We also discussed in those conversations what the next steps would be if we didn't make any headway on the salary and insurance. And in those conversations, the board was made aware that if we couldn't come to an agreement, that the next step in the process would be mediation. So after several rounds of negotiations, it became apparent to our negotiating team that they were at an impasse on changes related to insurance. So at that point, the negotiating team convened the board to discuss how we proceed. We were presented with a choice to try and settle without the insurance changes, or to push forward on those, knowing that the next step would likely be mediation. So once again, the direction from the board to our negotiating team was clear and consistent from all the board members. There was no dissent as to how we should proceed at that point. Almost immediately, though, after being informed of the board's position, both sides agreed to enter into the mediation process. The first mediation session did not resolve the issues. At the suggestion of the mediator, another session was scheduled for later in the summer. Following that first mediation session, the unions took a strike authorization vote, which led to our administration taking steps to plan for a possible strike. During that planning, it was decided that the date of the second mediation session should be accelerated, and both sides agreed to be here. Prior to that second mediation session, the board met again with our negotiating team to align on our approach. And once again, the board's direction was consistent, there was no dissent, you know, since it was fundamentally the same direction that the board provided earlier in the process. The board didn't introduce any new information or guidance into the process at that point. As with the first session, I saw firsthand the interactions between the negotiating teams in that second day of mediation. And I can attest that somebody who's in the room, just to the professionalism displayed by all parties involved, at no point did I feel that anyone was not negotiating in good faith. That everyone involved in the process, on all sides, is well-prepared, presented their views clearly, which really led to a productive dialogue during that second day of mediation. Ultimately, though, there was a fundamental disagreement about whether now was the right time to make changes to insurance. So with that being the case, we all concluded that a shorter term deal was best at this point in time, and that we'd continue the dialogue about future changes to insurance over the next two years. But to be clear, at no point in this process did I feel that the board was not informed, and at no point did I feel like our negotiating team was not acting on the direction that we provided. Strongly disagree with any assertions to the contrary, and just don't agree that a lack of involvement from the board resulted in mediation. From my perspective, the board was involved at every major decision point in this process. From setting the objectives at the beginning, to deciding to enter into mediation, to ultimately choosing to agree to the final deal, the board was there at every step. Again, I really want to just acknowledge the hard work that went into reaching this agreement from everyone involved. Sincerely appreciate the time, the energy that went into it, of a lot of hard work. And I look forward to continuing the dialogue over the next two years around ways that we can utilize our resources most effectively in order to support our teachers and staff while ultimately benefiting our students. So just wanted to share that, that insight with you, and there's not a lot of folks here to hear it, maybe some folks can see it on the video, but just wanted to share my perspective on the process. That's all I have.
Well done. My feelings too. Wanted to make a comment about the presentation tonight. I taught here thirty-five years, and I've seen the transformation of the Career Center. When I first started here, I taught a subject that in order to get to the Career Center, the students that were going there had to pass. Now, there's no doubt that the students today are much different than the students that were going there back then. It was kids back then that were struggling and did not happen to be at the high school base. So, you know, through the years, the transformation occurred to where students could go over there and actually, you know, learn something to go into the workforce right away. You know, students could back then too, but they're just, you know, it wasn't the same ability that there is today in what is offered over there. You know, just going over there the number of times just to see the facility is incredible. The food's great, I mean, nothing else, the food is really good. And I hope to get a little back some of it. But, you know, it's just nice to see something like this occur, and I've known students that have gone over there my last five, six years, that have gone in there, whether it's firefighting or anything else, that have come out with, you know, degrees, the ability to go right there and help people. So, once again, that was a great presentation. I also want to thank you guys for the negotiations and your hard work. I do, and glad that we were able to get to an agreement. We need to move forward, like Mr. Alonji said, and talk about what we need to do with the upcoming negotiations in a couple of years. With that, I don't have anything else. Very good for the second session. All right, another needed a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
That logic?
Yes.
Yes, there will be no activity after we're done with the executive session.